Looks like we're all back, so it is Wednesday the 24th. And council time. We're going to start with public comment only on agenda items. Anyone in the audience? Okay, well, let's move-
Caller, please go ahead and state your name and your comments.
Yes, this is Kimberly Goheen Elbin. Please don't cut me off because I'm going to be speaking about the agenda of Pride and Memorial. Caught me a little off guard here. I serve God, family, and country, and I'm going to take 20 seconds to introduce myself. My name is Kimberly Goheen Elbin, live citizen of Clark County. I took a note at the Vancouver barracks on my 18th birthday to defend America from foreign and domestic enemies. And even though I'm a CPS fighter for nine years now, when the COVID pandemic happened, my eyes and spirit were opened as the whole world was thrust into a wickedness of human control. I found out that Vancouver City Council are United Nations members, such as the Portland-
Thank you. Did you have anything on the actual agenda, ma'am?
Yes, I'm going to do that right now.
If you would like to spend your three minutes talking about an agenda item you mentioned.
So I'm going to do the agenda. I don't like sale pitch gold and silver either using a foreign tax dollars, so I'm going to talk about-
Okay, we'll go ahead and terminate the call. Thank you, ma'am. Any other callers? Okay. All right, old business.
I move to approve the minutes.
Wait a second. Okay, motion to approve, second any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. New business. We have body worn camera update.
Yes, Chief McKay even is going to join us and give us an update on the body camera program.
Good morning, deputy manager. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to discuss with you our body worn camera program. As you know, we put together a team several months ago and began a process of reviewing body worn cameras, which also includes vehicle mounted cameras, interview room cameras, and many other products which we can discuss today if you'd like. Before I begin, I did want to take a moment and thank the citizens of Clark County who voted for the public safety tax. Without their vote, this project would not be possible, and so thank you for that. I would also like to take a moment to thank our county manager, our county council, our deputy manager, and our sheriff. All of you have helped us form a very collaborative team of highly skilled people from around the county to make this project work. It has been, I am happy to report, a total team effort. I could name the folks involved, but we would be here for a while. But just so you know, they are excellent employees, and we should be very proud of every one of them. I did not do this alone. I could not have done this alone. And although I am in front of you alone, please know there is a huge team behind me. I am also happy to report to you that through our project manager, we have been tracking our goals, and we are in the green and on task. I would also like to take just a brief moment to thank the Vancouver Police Department and the Camus Police Department. As you know, they already have started their body worn camera program, and their assistance has helped us because they've shared their experiences with us, which has helped our team avoid some missteps. And so thank you to both those agencies. And then finally, just a quick thank you to Lauren and James with Axon for their continued support and by providing timely information for us, which has helped answer our questions. Axon was the company that was selected from the Washington State contract as our body worn camera vendor. Axon is a leader within the industry and is on the leading edge of technology in this arena. Other Washington State agencies that have already used Axon include the Seattle Police Department, the Spokane Police Department, Tacoma, Kent, Pierce County Sheriff's Office, the Spokane County Sheriff's Office, and as I said earlier, the Vancouver Police Department and Camus. I think you can feel comfortable knowing that these agencies in Washington State have also come to the same conclusion that Axon is the company to use. And we have the advantage because we can now reach out to these agencies, which we have done, and ask them about their experiences, which has also helped us avoid some missteps and save taxpayer dollars. The equipment that we have identified that we will be recommending to you at some point, this is just an update, is the Axon Body Worn Camera 4. Body Worn Camera 4 is their most advanced body worn camera system. It's brand new. It's replacing the Body Worn Camera 3. Some of the immediate benefits will be a greater field of vision or view. It goes from 146 to about 160. Two-way communication, which can be really critical if you need an interpreter. For the first time ever, a camera will be able to broadcast back, so instead of just recording in, you could have an interpreter somewhere off-site that could be talking through the camera. And there's many other benefits, mental health. So this is a fantastic new development for the camera system. It also has a longer battery life, which is important for our deputies, because as you know, they work a 12-hour shift, and having a camera readily available is important throughout that shift. Axon Taser 10, another revolutionary development in our less lethal tools. Experts around the country have reviewed Taser 10. They have determined it to be a real game changer for law enforcement. It is a greater level of less lethal force than we've seen in the past. One of the main benefits of Taser 10 is that you can be quite a bit further away from the individual. And as we know, the more time, the more distance, and the more shielding that we can provide our deputies, the greater the outcome, a positive outcome, and that's the goal. Axon themselves, when they announced Taser 10, announced what they call their moonshot, and their goal is to reduce law enforcement deadly encounters by 50% within the next decade. This weapon, this less lethal weapon, is their attempt to give us an option besides just a firearm or being really up close. So we're excited about that. Axon Fleet 3 is a vehicle mounted camera system with two forward-facing cameras and a rear seat camera. Axon Interview Room is an office-based camera system which allows our detectives to record an interview and then upload it into the evidence system. Axon Air is a software program that allows storage of our UAS drone footage, flight information, and pilot logs. Right now, it's being held on a server, and IT would tell you they would prefer to have the server space back. This will allow us to hold it within Axon Evidence in the cloud. Axon VR Training, which is a virtual reality-based training, which will allow our deputies to experience real-world scenarios in a safe environment. Axon Performance is particularly important to us because it's an audit program that will allow the county to ensure that our body worn cameras are being used correctly and within policy. We can drill down as far as knowing which deputies are turning them on, when they're turning them on, how long they're using them, are they doing it properly, and we can provide reports to the trainers and the other people that will be watching. Axon Evidence is an encrypted cloud-based storage system that will allow video footage to be stored for court purposes or other legitimate uses. It's encrypted and it's stored in a cloud. It's also CEGIS compliant. These Axon products, and we believe, will increase transparency and trust. We believe that when we implement this program, Clark County, the Clark County deputies, Clark County whole, will have one of the most advanced body worn camera systems in the state. Because we, timing-wise, we got, sometimes you're just lucky with timing, and Axon released this new equipment at the time that we were researching, and so we took advantage of that. Rather than buying older technology, we waited for the new stuff. What's left to do? Well, there are quite a few things left to do before I'll be back in front of you, hopefully with the entire team. We are finalizing the contract. We are finalizing the quote. We are looking at their statement of work to make sure that it matches what they say they can do, and in the deliverable timelines that they say they can do them. We have to finalize our budget planning process so that we know exactly what it's going to cost this county and for how long. We need to make final decisions about our workflow issues. Some of that is just who does what work? How do we talk with the other units within the county? And we anticipate being done and ready for your full review very soon. Again, I started by saying that I was very grateful for the team that we assembled, and I truly am. I think that the progress we have made has been terrific. I believe with your continued support, we will see body worn cameras on our deputies by late summer, early fall, and then we will move on to Fleet 3, Interview Room, and eventually the Taser upgrade that we so desperately need. I can go into greater detail about any of the products if you'd like. I wanted to provide you with an overview and then make myself available for any questions that you have. Thank you.
So, some of those new features you described, alls I can say is wow. Hadn't heard of that, and it sounds like an impressive array of additional features. Brings a couple of questions to my mind. One, I know you've pretty much been working years and have a lot of examples from other departments on standard operating procedures for your department. With all these new features, I'm just wondering, have you gone back to your proposed standard operating procedure to update them to make sure that you're incorporating all those features within your procedural list?
Yes. In fact, one of the things that we had to do very early on was look at body worn camera policy, and not only develop a policy that would be within the industry's best practices and also meet the national standards, as well as Washington State rules, which are very strict, as you know. But we have to see, how does that affect all the other policies, whether it be use of force, or our vehicle usage policy, because now we have cameras, or everything from recording, retention of these videos. So it's been a full review from top to bottom, yes. And in fact, again, complimenting some of these other agencies. Tacoma was really terrific about letting us look at their policy. We looked at WASPIC, they have a model policy. The Vancouver Police Department developed an excellent policy, which we were able to use quite a bit of the language. Now, obviously, some of it has to be tailored for our deputies. It's a very different work environment, depending on where they're assigned. And of course, Clark County has its own unique environment, but overall, yes, the answer to your question is, it's been a bit of work, and we're still going through many of those policies.
So, one additional last question, and if I ask something that may be sensitive as far as tactics and techniques. In the scenario of a contact and foot chase, you talked about features of being able to have broadcast through. The general question is, one, what's this range with that capacity? And two, does it have a GPS feature so you know where that deputy has just run to?
Yes, I'm happy to report that actually Axon Body Worn Camera has both. So it's a cellular-based system, also can run Wi-Fi, so you have the same range that you would have with a cell phone, which could be problematic, for example, in District 5, some of the more rural areas. But we're working on that as well. So yes, you have the ability, the same range as a cell phone. So you could, in theory, have somebody sitting in this building that's doing a live streaming, so we can, that's the other thing I didn't mention, so these cameras have the ability to do a live stream. So if I was wearing one right now, somebody back at headquarters could livestream this and watch, and they would see my point of view, basically. They would see what the camera sees, and they could also talk to you, as long as there's a cellular connection. As far as GPS, same thing. So we have GPS in our cars, and we would have them on our body cams as well.
Super. Other questions?
So the GPS works outside of the cellular system, so there would never be a lack of ability to know where the individual deputy is at?
It does to a point. We have a cradle point set up in the car where we can create a hotspot. If we lose complete connectivity, then it will pick up, it will show where you last were, and it will pick up as soon as it picks up a satellite. So in a very, very rural setting, it is possible that you would lose them, and you would hope to at least have your radio at that point. But there are some areas of the county that are so rural that it is not uncommon for deputies to lose the radio, their mobile computer, and in theory, they would lose their body camera, too. Now, it will continue to record, it just may not broadcast where the deputies at.
What's the lifespan of these? I mean, is there an expected lifespan of the battery and the equipment itself?
Yeah, so the battery is about 14 hours. The total lifespan of a camera, the way the technology is developing, Axon will replace the camera about every 2.5 years. Now, they will last a lot longer than that, but the technology is becoming so much more advanced in terms of size and speed and the internal-
So is it more like a lease setup, basically, where we're not buying the equipment individually, and then when we get rid of that one, we buy a new one, it's just kind of-
Correct.
Okay.
So the way Axon sets it up with both tasers and all their equipment, whether it be the Fleet system, the body worn camera system, it's all based on a lease. It's a master service agreement, and so they, for us, we're going to propose five years. And during that five years, if there's an upgrade to the equipment, then they come in and do that for you. They also provide 24-hour support and all the stuff that comes with a big company. But yes, we don't buy them, so we're not stuck with them.
Well, I'm sure I'm speaking for many in the community that were super excited about this program being implemented. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for your very thoughtful leadership in pulling this all together, and your team for their work on this, because I think it's very reassuring to the public to be able to hear how it's going and the benefit that we're getting, not being the first, from others' experience. Just a couple of questions. You know, I know that the funding is ongoing for this, and I think from a public perspective, they may think, well, once you purchase the cameras, you know, what else is the cost? So if you could explain that a little bit more, because it's really a whole program that becomes implemented, and I think some people are wondering, is there going to be any extra money that could be spent some other way?
Yeah, and that's a very fair point. And so in terms of the actual contract, we can drill down on that cost pretty specific, because we know how many cameras we're buying, how many tasers we need, and then all of the software programs that go with. In terms of the other costs that people may not even be thinking about, is a lot of times that's the employees that you have to add. So along with this program comes a number of employees that we're going to need to add to maintain the program. You need additional people in your IT department. We'll need additional people in our public disclosure unit to handle all the records requests that are coming in. The prosecutor's office will likely be asking for additional help. And those are the costs that are ongoing, long after you've leased the equipment. Now, in terms of Axon itself, if we were to add additional equipment, then that would be another cost. And again, I would have to come before you and explain to you and the public why we needed to do that. And that could be as simple as we added 10 deputies, and you need 10 additional cameras. Or we decided to build some, we opened a precinct or opened a substation, and we wanted to get another interview room. So they don't have to be huge costs, but there could be additional costs, and then, of course, the ongoing cost of the program itself.
Thanks for that. And then I wonder, speaking about public disclosure, how accessible would this information be to the public that might be concerned? I know there's been cases in other parts of the country where information has not been released for a great deal of time. Could you talk about that part of the program?
I'll make a few assumptions, because I'm not sure if you're talking about the equipment side, or you're talking about the video footage itself?
I'm talking about the video information itself.
Yeah, so the sheriff is committed to be very transparent. Now, Washington State in and of itself is very transparent. The public disclosure laws are such that they really do favor the public, and if a video is requested, it will be produced. The only exception to that would be an ongoing investigation, where you've got, for example, an officer-involved shooting, you would have a team of people that are outside the sheriff's office that are running that investigation, and there could be some collaboration about how soon a video is released. The good news is, the county owns the video, and in a dispute, it would be the county that would make the determination about the time of release, not the outside team of investigators. And I know the sheriff has spoken about his intent is that we would release it very quickly, because the goal is obviously to let the public know what has occurred, whether that is, what has occurred is good, or whether it's bad. They have a right to know. And the sooner we've seen around the country that you get a video out, a lot of times, the sooner you can really quiet those questions and concerns, because a video will show things that maybe somebody hasn't reported, or there could be a cell phone video that's really only 30 seconds of a much longer encounter. And so when you release a body worn camera footage in its entirety, you get a greater sense of what has occurred. So I think to your point, it will be important for us to manage that properly and get that information out as fast as possible, while still protecting the county and protecting those involved.
Great, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
I do want to comment on that, because we still have an initiative working to public disclosure and sorting through those requests will be an enormous FTE cost amongst all the county departments, and we're still hoping to partner with the sheriff on kind of having a consolidated office as much as possible to efficiently use those resources. And this gets really complex. You know, you mentioned ongoing investigations, you know, you have civil cases, you have criminal prosecutions, you have relevant parties that have direct access through the discovery processes of the courts. But when you start getting into, okay, well, here's a video of a sexual assault victim, here's a video of a child sexual assault victim, here's a video of a victim of any other crime, juvenile or otherwise, or passerby, you know, people that don't want to be out in the public domain but happen to be caught on a body cam. So those are going to be challenging issues for the lawyers and the disclosure office to sort through and do redactions, and it's very time-consuming, very complicated, and complicated only because Washington is so transparent on getting this out to those who may not be a stakeholder or really have a need to know, but just someone who's curious. So anyway, I'm hoping that the sheriff, and I've talked to John Horsh about it, and I know he is amenable and agreeable, and I know you have particular issues that would probably be more specific than a general office could handle. But anyway, I'm hoping that we can work together on that to get as much efficiency out of the staff, existing staff that we have.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. Public disclosure is a beast, and if you haven't experienced it, it can be overwhelming for the staff, just because of the amount of data that we'll be gathering, and then the amount of time it takes to redact. Now, there's some advantages that Axon offers. They do have a transcription service that's built in, they have a redaction service that's built in. We can set up some filters where we can gray out, you know, children and victims and plates and computers and things that, actually, AI has been built in that allows for that to be done very efficiently. But it still requires the human to sit there and look through those videos and make sure that we're not releasing a child's, you know, image. And you're absolutely right, it's going to be a daunting process for all involved. And these are the things that I worry more about than the camera itself. The camera is pretty basic and pretty easy to operate. It's going to be the behind-the-scenes stuff, and that's why I said in the beginning, I was so proud of this team we put together, because a lot of them are concentrating on that right now.
And one additional comment, because the experience level is very varied on the council now, and all the prior discussions we've had about this, and we've heard from the prosecutors, we've heard from the court, we've heard from the defense bar. And I can tell you, in my personal experience, you know, defense attorneys got to watch video. Prosecutors have to watch video. Judges often have to sit, and I've done it myself, in chambers, watching hours of nothing happening, because there were allegations of force or coercion and getting an involuntary statement. So there's going to be requests, I estimate, down the road, for additional staffing to deal with some of these issues. And it's going to be for each, from the court to the defense, to the prosecution, maybe even the sheriff, as far as staffing this. So more to come once we roll it out.
Yeah, I would agree. This will be something that will be an ongoing conversation in the community for quite a while, but I think the community can be very proud of where we're at and where we're headed.
Last questions, Michelle? Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I was wondering about the warranty of the cameras, and if one breaks, how quickly will the company be able to replace them?
That's an excellent question. Axon actually has fantastic customer service, and they commit that they will have a new camera in our hands within 48 hours. The other thing that they do is they build in a 3% overage, so we will have cameras on our shelf at logistics that we can immediately replace, and then we'll send them the old camera, the broken camera, and they'll replace it within 48 hours. And that's, I've asked other agencies if that's true, and I've been told that their customer service is outstanding, and that is, in fact, very true. That they're very proud of their equipment, and they're happy to come help.
Thank you. And how long are the cameras good for? Like, are they going to be replaced over a period of time, regardless if they break or not? Like, how's that work?
Yes, generally, Axon's technology improves to enough that they will issue a new version. So for example, the Vancouver Police Department has the Axon Body Worn Camera 3. In the time that they implemented their program and we started our implementation process, there's already been one improvement. It's now Axon Body Camera 4. I anticipate in two and a half years, we will probably hear from Axon, and they will have a 5. And so what they do is they will slowly roll out the 5, take back all the 4s, and it's pretty seamless. Now, you know, we have a five-year contract, so if we extend another five years, we could see Axon Body Camera 6 or 7. We don't, you know, this technology's improving in leaps and bounds, and it's amazing where it's headed.
So that's a great question. In the contract that we're going to sign, is there going to be an upgrade clause in there, so we don't have to-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they build it in. Their goal is to get their newest equipment out. Same thing with the Fleet system, same thing with the tasers. As they make improvements, Taser's usually about every five years, camera's about every 2.5, is what I've been told.
Super. So this is just an update? You don't need any guidance? It sounds like everything's on track, the supply chain is working, and we look forward to, I'd like to see a demonstration at some point when you're ready.
Absolutely. We can bring the gear in as soon as we get it, or we can bring in a Vancouver police officer and show you what it looks like right now. There's some really cool videos, and I can send lots of literature. And this is, in fact, an update, and I hope to have a team here in front of you with the final version, ready to go.
All right, super. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, chief.
So we'll move on to, we have some proclamation discussions. 3.2 is Proclamation Pride Month. I don't know if everyone's seen it yet, I've got it up on my screen right now. I've reviewed it before, and we've done this proclamation before. I am a firm believer in human rights and fundamental freedoms, and I support this proclamation. I did have one small- I did have one small edit I wanted to make. And I was going to suggest, if you go to the whereas's, the third from the bottom, I would rather it read, or I'm suggesting that it reads, Clark County celebrates and supports dignity, equality, and increased visibility for all members of our community. And that's the only edit I was going to suggest. We don't have a, normally our policy advisor would present these. Was the deputy manager going to make some further comments or presentation?
I was going to gather whatever comments the council has and then whatever edits we decide to make. Then we can produce those and get it back and forth.
So other comments or edits, is there support? And I'm hopeful there is. We've done this before.
I absolutely support it. I'm just looking at your edit and thinking about that.
I support your edit, Councilor Mebge.
So you're suggesting that it would be Clark County celebrates and supports dignity, equality, and so on? You would just? I guess from my standpoint, and maybe you can elaborate a little bit. I'm not quite understanding the intention behind it.
Yeah, so there's, I'm trying, with every proclamation we do, I really try to steer away from any potential divisiveness. And so making a blanket statement that we celebrate all sexual and gender diversity then gets into divisive areas because there's a lot of consternation across the nation on gender affirmation and what that means and at what age. And I think it gets into an area of controversy and deviates from the overall positive theme of celebrating and recognizing diversity, dignity, equality. So that was my reasoning. Those are the only words that I kind of caught my attention as we may get. I don't want pushback from the community. I want support from everybody out there. And so I don't want anyone to read it and go, well, I disagree with that. That's my whole intent.
I guess I would be fine with leaving in all sexual and gender diversity. But the third whereas includes it's vital to support our LGBTQ youth, people of color, disabled communities. So I think it's just kind of in keeping with that third whereas.
I didn't follow that. I don't know if you could just kind of restate what you just said?
I guess fundamentally, I would just leave it in. And I don't see it as any different than the third whereas LGBTQ youth. I don't know. Was this drafted, who was the initial drafter of this proclamation? Did it come from the community?
It came from a representative. It's not a national proclamation. It's locally generated. And it came to me. And since I had supported it in the past, I told them I'd support it again in the future. And again, we don't, you know, we don't have the normal person that, in the policy position, that would accept our edits.
Right.
So I'm hoping we don't have to do this in public for too much longer.
Do you want to send me any edits that you have offline and then I can update this? Or are we close to agreement in the?
I think it would be good to communicate with the original drafter and just make suggestions and get a reaction, just out of respect.
Yeah, I agree with that. And one thought too, and I don't know if this would make a difference. I'm just trying to understand, but if we added people of, Clark County celebrates people of all sexual and gender diversity? I don't know if that helps or?
How about I add the recommendations and then I can communicate with the originator and then we can go from there? Councilor Mebge.
No problem, Ms. Hahn. These proclamations are so challenging sometimes. And then we have to come back in public, then we have to vote on it, and it gets delayed. And, you know, we ran into this with Black History or celebration of Black History Month. And we ended up publishing it when the month was almost completely over. And that was unfortunate. I mean, I want to avoid that here.
So it sounds like we're just on this, the fifth paragraph is where our only decision point is. Other than that, people are, council's agreeable to the proclamation, other than that paragraph?
Yes.
Okay.
And how quickly could this come back?
Soon as I can get who it came from today, from you, Councilor Mebge. And then I can request and I'll send it out and then we can talk about it. So today, I can get it out to the council today. Thank you.
I have a proclamation for Memorial Day as well.
And this one was updated, I want to say this morning, right? Or 5/22 was the updated version that we're showing right here. Any edits to this one? Have you had a chance to look at the new version?
I have a suggestion on an edit, Amber, just that we capitalize veteran throughout the document. I work for the Department of Veterans Affairs and that's how we reference veteran in all our documents. Just grammatical.
Thank you, Councilor Bocca. Okay. I would support that.
So this came primarily from CMAC, the Community Appreciation Committee, request. Last year, I do believe, the chair attended at Fort Vancouver. And I've done it in years past. What is the intent? So we settle on it. What's the intent for reading it? Does it get read at Fort Vancouver? Does it get read here? Because I don't know what she, I didn't attend when she attended. So I didn't know if she read a proclamation or just did a few-minute speech, what she had done.
I'm not actually sure. And I know that's just the chair's, the chair had this up. So I'm not exactly sure of the intent of when it's going to be read. But if we, what I want to ask too is on this proclamation, do you want it to look like the others? Because this is not in the same format. I would assume that you guys want that to look like the other proclamations that come forward. And I can update that on the format, but I'm not sure, Councilor Mebge, on what the chair's piece is. We can get that.
So forget setting the logistics aside. Do we have support?
For the bulk, other than the veterans' capitalization?
Yeah, with Michelle, incorporating Michelle's content change.
Yeah, definitely supportive. Okay, super.
Great.
All right, so it sounds unanimous. And then we'll work out the logistics.
Perfect.
And maybe do that in coordination with CMAC. All right, well, then we can move on to council reports. Yes, so reports. Council Marshall and I got, sorry to spill the beans here, but we got an opportunity to go and tour Lake Vancouver yesterday with a few of the members of Friends of Vancouver Lake. And it was a good experience. And I know that that's going to be coming up in front of us pretty soon. But I'm sure, I'm pretty sure you've been there as well. So if any of us haven't been there, take the time. They're more than happy to accommodate it. Because it really does, like, I've heard their story many times, even sitting down with them in person. But going there and actually visually seeing it really helps us to much better comprehend the whole thing. So encourage anybody else that hasn't had the opportunity to reach out to Friends of Vancouver Lake and get that tour.
Yeah, and I'd reinforce that, Michelle, if you haven't done it. And it will be pertinent to some additional decisions we will be making in the future. I mean, I've been engaged in this for four years now and done the tour. And I fly over it all the time looking. And I'll get it to an event that Sue and I attended yesterday too that's related. But, you know, we have a consultant that's going to be coming back. We have another earmark. The whole goal is to get a lake management program in place that's going to be effective to make some changes. And to that, it would be really good to take a tour by boat around the lake. So you can see the Flushing Channel, see some of the shallows, and see some of the other issues that are out there. And I'll just make this comment and then separately talk in council reports about the wastewater treatment plant. But when we were looking for consultants from the last earmark, we had a number of bidders. And I had reached out to WSU because they had done the work, I think about 20, 30 years ago on a study. And some of, one of the scientists that now leads the engineering department was actually a student that participated in that and now chairs the department. But they didn't get selected. They were putting, they put together a proposal. But what I heard yesterday at the wastewater treatment plant, that they just had a long interview, the director there and WSU. It sounds like they are doing their own study, which we need to learn about and see what they're focusing on. And I'm hoping that's true. But anyway, it's going to take a lot of resources. And my personal view, you know, I want to get Corps of Engineers back. I want to get the Flushing Channel open. I have engaged Steve Manilow at the Lower Columbian Fish Recovery Board. He gave some comments about connecting up some of the original streams and rivers that flow into the lake the way they historically were, which would increase habitat and recovery efforts across all species of fish. And, you know, and that over the years development has intruded upon. So there's, we look forward to the report coming back from the last RFP and then the next one. But so please, everyone go out there, take the tour with Friends of Lake Vancouver. It is definitely worthwhile. Any other comments on that?
I would just like to make a comment. I would thank Friends of Vancouver Lake for the tour. It was a beautiful day yesterday to get out there. And just people haven't really gotten involved with Vancouver Lake. It's just a wonderful recreational resource. It attracts national rowing events. Its ability for the public to participate is curtailed because of the water quality issues. So as we can address that, it will, you know, just serve the community much more.
And they just had, they just completed the competition, which is somewhat of a national event. People come from all over to participate in that. If the lake was slightly deeper, even just at the race course that's set up, then it would be an international event.
Right. They estimate that each of these racing events brings in about a million to the community for all of the people that are attracted and all of the money that they spend.
Anyway, it sounds like we have a lot of support and interest in Lake Vancouver. I'm hoping we can push in that direction and get our stakeholders together and have a complete lake management plan and take some actual steps to relieving the points of friction right now with the lake. I wanted to mention, and I think Sue may touch on it as well. We went to the wastewater, Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant yesterday. I really was just amazed. And so I want to comment on just what the high points were. And we spent several hours there. Number one, oh my God, it's brilliantly lit. The presentation we had and we peppered lots of questions. It was just a phenomenal leadership team that's out there. And I know, to some extent, the county struggled with it over the years. And so I didn't realize what a monumental decision we had made just a few years ago to turn management over. So this team was amazing. The science, the technology, the machinery out there. I mean, and the planning that's gone into it. Every building, every facility, every stage of water treatment is planned to expand. And I think the figure was ultimately like 30 million gallons a day. So it's all built in to the structures. And they're well positioned to expand as the population continues to grow here. And I think their estimate goes out to like 50 years if that. Anyway, it's a remarkable facility. They do their best to take care of odors and be good neighbors with developments that are encroaching and getting closer and closer there. From air quality to the purity of the water that's discharged, ultimately, they're doing a phenomenal job. Here are the takeaways that I also wanted to highlight during that presentation, and some of which I didn't know about. Even within our urban areas, and I understand the city of Vancouver has some of this issue too, but within our urban areas, our urban areas, we have still 1,500 properties that are on septic systems. And they're just barely chipping away at bringing those, you know, as they fail, getting them hooked up to the infrastructure of the sewer. So that's a costly challenge that lays ahead. But, and we've had a lot of discussions about our railroad. And here are my takeaways, because I've shifted a little bit after the presentation that I saw. So, and Sue had brought this up in asking staff to identify what businesses can we attract that don't need sewer. I think that's a really relevant and more important question than I originally thought. Because I just assumed all businesses really need to be on sewer. And it really depends on their, you know, their water needs, you know, what's going through the plant. Not all of them need it. So there can be a lot of development that doesn't rely on sewer. And the only caveat there is we don't want to attract any industry that has heavy metals or dangerous discharges that our regional wastewater treatment plant would not readily be able to handle. But the learning lesson there is, okay, we really don't need sewer in some locations. And it would be so cost prohibitive. And we talked about Amboy and Yakult and those areas because they've had discussions in the past. But the terrain is so hard and it's so far from existing systems that it would be so cost prohibitive to put it out there. So the issue of legality really is a secondary issue. It's really cost. So that was a huge takeaway for me. And I think as a result of their presentation, I'd really like them to come at some point to do a work session with us to go over all of their operations, but specifically also asset impacts or could impact the railroad. The other thing that came up is the highlighting of the exceptions, not just for schools that I already knew about, we've discussed, but for health reasons, other exceptions beyond urban growth boundary that are already approved and operating with our wastewater, regional wastewater sewer system. So we really haven't dug into that very much. What have we already done and approved for what kind of businesses and homes or industry? You know, and we had some examples explained to us. But that was kind of a revelation, an eye-opener for an area of the law that we hadn't really explored, our own code that allows those exceptions. allows those exceptions. So and then the industrial land bank exists, the old industrial land bank, the Langley property, what I gathered, and we didn't talk in detail about it, but it sounds like the infrastructure is there, it's ready. And so I'm hopeful that we can make put some emphasis on the county council on getting that partial opened up with with the availability of sewer. But the bottom line with all of this is they are tracking, they are planning, they can respond to any decision the county makes. And if they can't, they tell our staff and public works that, hey, this isn't going to work. Because I was concerned about the 179th because we didn't hear much briefing on that, on that part of the infrastructure when we lifted urban holding there. They do have their existing pipe expanded all the way from Richfield down. So the spline is there, the backbone is there essentially. But I was assured that they participated with staff and that we would have been told as a council if that was an issue, that they weren't going to be able to meet concurrency with with a sewer system. Anyway, those are my major takeaways.
Thank you. I would like to make a couple of comments. I'm really glad that you were able to participate in the tour, Councilor Medvee. And I think I would just like to commend John Peterson, the general manager of the wastewater treatment plant, because this community is really, really well served by his expertise and his long range planning to keep in place because wastewater treatment is fundamental to our infrastructure and without our capacity to treat wastewater, there really is no growth. So that's very important. And I think I would agree that it would be worthwhile for them to come before the council for a work session to further understand the role that they play. They often operate behind the scenes, but they track comprehensive plan update and and all of the growth. They follow what we're doing very closely and I think it'd be good for us to see more openly the role that they're playing. I'm not quite sure that I would agree that the infrastructure is in place for the Lagler property, but there could there are options that could be explored and, you know, get some legal opinions on whether some of those options would would work or not. But anyway, it's it was a Salmon Creek wastewater treatment plant and it's really in a lovely area and they've been very good neighbors to in addressing any concerns that the neighbors have. So it was it was a great tour.
And and just to be clear, I didn't mean that all the infrastructure is there, but the basic infrastructure there, like broadband, connecting the sewer lines even with those properties of 1,500 within our urban area gets to be a real challenge, depending on how those connections are made, how long they are, the individual property owner's willingness to do it. Anyway, lots of detail that a work session, I think, would really be beneficial at some point. Other councillor reports?
Yes, I attended the Sheriff's Guild fundraiser this Saturday and just wanted to let the council know that both the Sheriff's Department and Vancouver City Police were very touched by last week's proclamation ceremony. They were very, very appreciative. I received feedback from both Donnie Sahoda and Jill Brown, the two widows that we recognized, and their families were just very grateful and just wanted to say thank you to the other, let you know that they said thank you to the council as a whole. It was a great day. They did a lot of fundraising and the Guild, they do a lot of community outreach with the money that they raise for different things, for local sports teams, for kiddos who can't necessarily afford some of the trips out of town and different community groups that they give money to. So they're very involved with the community. They do a lot of really great things. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then also councillor, councillor Marshall, could you send me the Friends of Vancouver Lake information? I'd love to reach out to them and go for a visit, although I spent a lot of my childhood swimming in the lake when it didn't have the problems it has now. But that's a very different perspective than I'm sure that you got the other day. So loved it, love to reach out to that group and get a tour going. Thank you.
So thanks for doing that, Michelle, on behalf of the council and yourself and that I'm sorry I wasn't there to attend. That was a great thing. One last, and talking about visiting Lake Vancouver, years ago before the pandemic, we had the Youth Commission come to this room and we had tables set up and a number of councillors participated, kind of like a round robin with many councillors. And I mean, this is our, I'm hoping we can get back to that kind of robust presentation, if you will, and participation by the council because the interaction is really good with these really well informed students. And and we do have one here today and I'm wondering, you don't have to say your last name, but I'm wondering if you could just kind of introduce yourself, what school you are from and some of what the Youth Commission does, Clark County Youth Commission.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mara. I go to Vancouver School of Arts and Academics. I'm a junior in high school and I have been a part of the Youth Commission for two years now, I think. So I've never been in this room before. I wasn't a part when we a part of it when we came here. But yeah, basically, we meet every other Thursday and we discuss things that are happening in our community that we feel passionate about. So this year we've been focusing on community resiliency and what that means to us as like as in our generation. And yeah.
Thank you. Very well stated. Any other councillor reports? Otherwise, we'll go right to work session requests.
Just one last.
Yes, please.
So Friends of Vancouver Lake, they have they have requested to be a part of an upcoming workshop. And I had spoke in my one-on-one with Kathleen regarding this and I can't remember the exact outcome of that conversation, but would staff be willing to reach out to them and let them know, first of all, if they would be able to be a participant in that workshop and if not, you know, what the future looks like and how they can be involved in that?
I'll connect with Kathleen and make sure she hasn't done the outreach already and then if not, we will we'll circle back to them.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, let's move on then to work session request 5.1.
Okay, so we have two work session requests. The first one is a joint work session between community planning and public works. So this is a desired result of this is continued development of the transportation system plan. So the joint presentation, then this is to seek councils' support to include the TISP as part of the 2020-25 Comprehensive Growth Management Plan. And Gary's in the room still and Oliver's online if you have any questions about this work session. And if not, we'll get it scheduled.
Do we take that as positive affirmation from everyone?
Yep, I think that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Okay, unanimous.
Okay, on to the second one. So this is requested by Public Health Solid Waste Operations Program and the topic is private versus public ownership of transfer stations. So Dr. Malnick, I think, is still online as well and can answer any questions about this particular work session that the council has.
I would just like to say I really appreciate the detail in this work session request. It was it framed up the issues very well, so thank you for that. And I would support this work session.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, and you know, historically, we've taken some criticism for not taking advantage of some of these transfer issues and working on them more diligently, especially, well, I'll leave it at that. We look forward to it again unanimously.
Dr. Malnick, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, but thank you. We look forward to having this detailed discussion with you. We think we can do it in 30 to 45 minutes, but but thank you.
Thank you.
Policy issues?
I have no updates on policy issues.
I have one one issue on policy that I'd like to bring up. A couple of weeks ago, we instructed staff to move forward with the road vacation. I don't know if you recall, I brought it up that I had toured the area, looked at the area and determined it was really too small for a safe stay community. I know there's been conversation about a potential safe stay community or in safe park in the future. We've not made any decisions on that. However, I do know that with the city, their most difficult part is finding a parcel and a location to do so. And I just happened to see the window up on my computer and I'm like, I just I checked into it and actually it appears that that there's a fence that's significantly into county property and I measured using the measuring tool and it looks like it's plenty wide, actually. So it could potentially be used. There's a lot more things that need to be looked into at infrastructure. There's a ton of things. So this may not be the proper location. However, if we do vacate the property, it can't be a location. So I would I'm seeking support from council to instruct staff to pause on moving forward with that vacation process until we determine what we want to do and whether this might be a potential property to use for that.
I'm not sure where things were left related to moving forward with a safe stay or safe park. I think, you know, my sense is there's definitely a need. It seems that as I'm recollecting the conversation that was had with the city of Vancouver related to their ability to operate it. So I think there's, you know, who might operate this? I think there's definitely a need and it would be I would support looking into this further and working out some of those details because I think finding a site is one step. Staffing and what other logistics need to be figured out are are another step and funding for the whole thing. So I would support looking into it.
So let me respond with this way because it does get start to get more complicated, but here's my best swag at where the county is in. We are treading water. We had the notion to ask staff a while ago, hey, locate some available properties with the criteria that some of the stakeholders, including the city of Vancouver, had raised. And then we never even went out to look at them. There's there's no participation from the city right now in their budget to work with us other than to consult. And we just had by email, and I think everyone received it, kind of an update on where our ARPA money is because we were, you know, the last council allocated more than $15 million as a quick and robust infusion into the homeless situation and with $5 million specifically allocated towards shelter. And we did get an update and it shows some real challenges with capacity. You know, we haven't actually spent, we've got the money allocated, but it's not spent. We've only spent about $3 million or so of the $15 million. But capacity for operators, you know, we we were hard pressed without outsiders in, but they've really risen to the challenge. Sheriff House has some mixed reviews out there, but but across the board, it's we're hard pressed to find local operators that we can rely on. So but I want to add to this mix. So one, I don't know the specific details of the property you're mentioning, but I would like to pause, but I want to add to it. I really want to know where our undeveloped properties are. I want to I literally want to see them on a GIS map, all of our locations. I, you know, when I first became a councillor, I was told that we were inventorying all of our capital assets, buildings, undeveloped property. And I was told that over time that that was done, but I would really like to see them myself. And let because here's the reason why, and I wasn't going to bring it up in this context, but since you mentioned the issue. So I went and had a meeting of sorts with Habitat for Humanity just a few days ago, last week, and talked to their contracting manager. The they would be really excited to partner with us. And where I see the need for some perhaps pallets, you know, basically my question to them, do you have a book inventory of designs of around the nation of small homes, tiny homes that you build? And the answer was simply no. They pretty much go property to property to design what is needed. And normally those are single family homes. But we started brainstorming about potential communities like a safe community that would have pallets or maybe some community style homes that had separate rooms. I related it to an experience that I had in college called the Living Learning Center that brought different people of cultures into into a common area, but they each had their own private room. And we know that that's a real challenge with homeless people who aren't partnered. So most of the city's pallets, although they're designed for two, only have one occupant. And and I see that as being inefficient. And I'm satisfied with the discussions with the city that they really did their due diligence to find the best bargain, if you will, for pallets, style homes. But I'm thinking, one, we need to see what does the county have because it's real estate. It's property that everyone is looking for to do any of this work. It's got to be in the right location. So I would ask, I would endorse Glenn's request to pause that one property, but I would like to see a presentation, you know, what what happened to those other three properties? Where were they? And but what are all the others? Where are they all? I want to I want to have visibility of it directly to answer these questions of, hey, we've we've still got $12 million unspent of our ARPA funds that were allocated for this. Maybe we should lift some of them from where they're allocated and move them over and build one of these communities. And of course, the challenge is who's going to operate it? Can we get someone to operate it? A lot of details, a lot of muscle movement. The city is willing to help and advise as much as they can. So anyway, I think that's where we're kind of at right now. We're we've made no decision to go forward or backwards.
Well, I would be for making a decision to go forward and the I think inventorying all of the properties that might be available, there could be multiple solutions, including safe stay, safe park. From what I've seen, it's a successful model, but there could be other properties that some tiny homes could be built. And yeah, and and to look at not just the properties, not just the locations, but also the support services that would be needed. And I think it needs to be approached with multiple solutions to address the multiple problems. And I must say that just lately, it's really come to my attention more about homeless children and really understanding the extent of that because just listening to early childhood trauma and the long lasting impacts that have. It's we're in a crisis situation and if we have some millions of dollars that could be reallocated, and I think we need to spend those within a certain timeframe that now is the is the time to, you know, bring, bring forward all, all solutions. And working also, I think, with the small cities out there, I was just visiting with the mayor of Le Center, they have homeless people there. It's really more hidden, I think, in the rural areas, but it exists and there may need to be some tailored approaches to some of those smaller communities.
And I do want to, I was also talking to councillor Stover at that meeting with Habitat for Humanity. As one of the, I wouldn't say it was, I would say constructive criticism, goals of mine were always to measure success. And measuring success with the objective of exiting people from homelessness. And, and I, you know, what I mentioned to councillor Stover was, that's something I know the city is still struggling with, but making progress in their locations. And that's something I absolutely want to emphasize. And to that, Council for the Homeless is going to have a presentation by, on the, what we're calling the Houston Model. And there's a lot of models out there and, you know, from San Diego and elsewhere across the country. But that's, you know, that's the detail and the detail, that's when we get to operating. Okay, what, what's the RFP going to look like? But the first challenge is getting the property. So it sounds like we may have three on the dais that are supporting this. Michelle, what, what are your comments?
Well, I'm a little, I'm actually, I'm a little confused because I thought the last, maybe, maybe I missed something, but I thought the last word was that the county didn't have the funding to do the safe stays. And when I was going through the past Echo meeting minutes, I saw that in December, I believe, last December, that they were considering four, four locations that were primary and rural locations. But because of the funding issue, nothing really happened to go forward with that. So I thought it was stopped, like we weren't going anywhere because it's the funding issue.
Yeah, so what I was highlighting is there may be an opportunity to lift and shift some of the money of those 15-plus million dollars of ARPA funds that have to be spent with a certain amount of time, maybe could, could be refocused. I mean, that'll take input from Michael and Vanessa and staff. But I, I think you're right in how you summarized where we were. So I want to look beyond those three properties. I want to look at the property that Glen just mentioned, but I want to, I want to see a map of all of our properties. Where are they all? Are, are some of them excess? Let's sell them. On the other hand, if any of them are usable for this purpose, which is needed now. So what, what do you think about that?
I've got a couple of comments.
Yeah, I would, I would support that. And definitely I would like to see a list of our properties along with a list of our leases. I'm interested in that as well.
Just a couple of comments, if I may. One is that I think we need to be very specific because there are kind of two categories of properties that we can look at. So the specific one that I had mentioned, the only reason the county was aware of it is because I think somebody brought it to their attention because there is no GIS account for it. And I did have, I wish our county manager was here to, I had a conversation with her about this. And it is going to require some effort and some resources and staff time to get a hold, to gather the data of any property that we might actually own, but it doesn't have a GIS account number assigned to it. So I'm in favor of making that investment where we have a solid inventory of everything, but I don't know if we direct without county manager being here at the time to kind of speak to that. And then that was one thing. And then the second thing I was also going to mention is that mental health sales tax dollars can also be used to, for something like a safe stay. So just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. So I would be somewhat chagrined after all these years of investigating what the county owns, that we don't have a map of, I mean, how much more work needs to be done to figure out where our properties are, if you know. But I, I think we, we need, I think we've got three people here that want to go forward and, and get some fidelity on this issue.
So I have that summarized and so I'll go forth with staff and look at what we have and then get a list and look and see if we can put it on a GIS map. Because I know that, to your point, councillor Young, there is real property, mentioned that last time. We do have stuff that just comes up that we didn't know we had, like the slippers of property that we have in places that don't have a GIS tag. We do have that. We know that exists. But I will look at the other pieces of that. So I will take that and, and discuss with staff.
Okay. Yeah, well, I mean, there's road vacations, there's easements. I mean, I, I don't know if we need to be specific that, hey, it's got to be a half acre or more, you know, instead of looking at these, you know, 200 square foot partials.
We did a research in December, talking about what councillor Belkot's mentioning with Echo. We went through parks and public works. So we have, we have different departments that have lists. So we will put, we'll look at what we have and agree that needs to be in a centralized location and may, and potentially it is. So I'll look at that and we'll, we'll go from there.
Super. So thanks for bringing that up. That was a timely and good discussion, I think. We have no executive sessions today, correct? All right. We are adjourned then.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.